Hey, what's happening all you dudes and dudettes out there? This is dudes talking freedom back at you once again. This is Luke. I'm here with Jeff, Jeremy, Vince, and Garrett Linker. Are you guys DTF?
Hell yeah, I'm DTF.
You know I'm DTF.
I'm always DTF.
I never stopped DTF.
All right, and you know I'm definitely DTF. We're brought to you by Warriors for Freedom, a nonprofit that creates pathways to engage service members, veterans, and their families to prevent suicide, create camaraderie, and help them live their the best lives. Check them out at warriorsforfreedom.org. All right, folks, we have Garrett Linker back in studio undefeated Prosper School Board Champion. We'll be reviewing how his tenure is going, and as usual, we'll be talking freedom and whatever the hell else we want to talk about. So let's get into it, shall we?
Let's do it.
What is up, man?
What's up dudes?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
He's one to know.
Yeah.
Undefeated.
Oh, yeah. I thought we were gonna build this up, and now we're just gonna jump right into it.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm done.
Build it up, man. Let's talk about it.
They're gonna make some drama.
Do we have to start?
Garrett's been on before, and he was running.
Well, he said he's never stopped being DTF, I think.
Oh, okay. That's why he's one to know.
Yes.
Well, no, he was one to know because he won.
Aw, damn it. Were you not listening when?
No.
School Board Champion. Hey, congratulations, Garrett.
Thank you.
On your win.
One to know. Appreciate it. You gotta start somewhere.
So last time you were on, we were in a super hot garage.
We were. You guys have upgraded.
And we gotta give a shout out to Casey.
Ms. Merkling.
Yeah. Casey, what's up?
She wishes she could be here.
And she's DTF too, right?
Yeah.
After dinner.
After dinner, she said. That's right. And.
Chick-fil-A?
You know, we were, it was leading up to like election time, and.
I think we were, were we two weeks before?
I think so. I think so, yeah. We got connected. It was like, uh, you know, we finally got connected, we got it scheduled. It was about two weeks before the actual election.
I remember I had been walking all day. I do remember that.
And then you came in studio and stood for another two hours.
Yeah, you let us sit.
Yeah, we got a chair for him. We got a chair for him. Yeah, I remember there were a couple of chairs there for them that night. So tell us like kind of how it all went down, you know, like you, I mean, you, we, we had you on. I heard a story from someone that Casey bumped into someone outside of a voting location, and they were like, oh, I heard about Garrett from the dudes talking freedom podcast. Is this true?
I mean, I won by 19 votes, so it's probably true.
Did we help influence an election?
I think we might have, and I think it's a cool if we did, you know.
Election tampering?
No, no, no. Just influence.
Okay, good.
Just influence. I mean, look.
Twenty mules?
We have a lot of, uh, you know, similar opinions on probably how things should be done in the school systems in the area that we chose to come live in. And, um, that was one of the, you know, reasons we had started, you know, talking to him about coming on the show. And so I'm glad he won, you know, I mean, and if, and if it was, you know, voters that were listeners of ours that we were able to swing that vote to, you know, get Garrett in to, you know, help us kind of, you know, at least lead the charge on some of the things that we care about with our kids in schools these days, then, you know, I'm proud of that.
Yeah, I mean, you said that, uh, that the elections are always pretty close, and you said like fifteen, twenty votes, and here we were, fifteen, twenty votes, right?
I remember, I remember talking and telling you that these elections have in the past been decided by less than ten. I did not think that would be mine. But it, how many of you are not from Texas? Yeah, okay. So I think.
Imports.
Our success was in large part, a lot of the transplants that came.
I voted for you, by the way.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm from Texas.
Well, four right here without you, it would have been fifteen.
I don't know.
Or no, I would, yeah.
Yeah. I voted. Did you vote?
And my, I think we got messages almost daily from, from Casey, like, hey.
She worked it.
Yeah.
She was amazing. I could not have done it without her.
She worked that poll.
Yeah.
She did.
You know, the polling station.
You're right.
Just gonna sit the next couple of plays out. Sorry, Casey. Love you.
It was the craziest thing that I've ever done. Um, we moved here in January of 21 and had no intention of running for school board. But after leaving California and you guys leaving the states that you moved from, we, we saw what the garbage schools were like, and we all moved to Prosper probably for the same reason. And so, when I got here and started getting, getting involved and realized there was gonna be three seats up, I decided to try it out, and I knew once I decided I was gonna throw everything I had. And so knocked thirty seven hundred doors all by myself. Uh, well, Casey came sometimes, but mainly by myself. Advertised like crazy on social media, came and talked to people like you, tried to go to areas where I thought there was enthusiasm for wanting to change what our schools are like, not really in Texas, because Texas is why we all moved here. But there's some garbage coming in.
Yeah.
So wanted to do my part to look out for our kids.
So you won that night. Walk us through it.
It was a long night. So polls.
But by the way, there's already garbage here. It didn't just come in. There's, there's garbage in the city centers.
Talk about some stuff in Frisco tonight. I mean, there's some stuff, yeah, just to the south. Um, but going back to election night, so polls close at seven, we're all out at the polls. We, so the way that it works is they close, they close the polls, and then they, within the first few minutes, they release the early voting totals. And so if you're way behind in early voting, or if you're way ahead, then it's a pretty good indication of how the night's gonna go. So we're all sitting out there, all the candidates for council, for school board, and we're just refreshing our phones. And all of a sudden, they post the results, and the two other school board races had immediately been decided. They were ahead enough that it was clear.
Very lopsided.
My race, it was, I think at that point, it was within twenty something votes, and I was behind. And I thought that was a good sign because I thought a lot of the vote that would come in early was not votes that I would typically probably be getting.
You mean like mail-in votes?
No, mainly like voters that don't.
Election fraud.
Well, I would imagine a lot of the folks who have been here for a long time and just kind of will go with the local folks.
That the new guy, you know, to.
I want that guy from California.
Yeah, I think there was a lot of hesitancy around to see for that reason. Um, a lot of people in the district were nervous about why I was running and what I was trying to do. Hope, hopefully that will be proven, you know, that I had good motivations moving forward. But, um, so I figured that vote was in on early voting. And I thought the same day voting was going well because I literally hustled down everybody that came in. So I did not sit all day. Someone walked up, I chased him down, introduced myself.
Asked if they had an absentee ballot?
Ten or fifteen second elevator speech, and, um, so within twenty votes, we're sitting there, and we don't know how that race is gonna end. And so we went over to Silo Park and tried to get what we hoped would be a victory party started. And maybe two, two and a half hours later, um, I'm sitting in my car because my phone had died. So I'm sitting in my car trying to charge it, and then all of a sudden, I've got people knocking on my door, and there's council people that knew we were at Silo Park, other school board members coming to say.
Were they telling you you can't sleep in the parking lot?
No, they came and said, congrats.
You can't stay here.
Yeah, they said, congrats, you won. And I, I still hadn't realized it yet, but, um, so yeah, so they called the results and had people come over and congratulate me, and then we had a good time at Silo Park.
Awesome. I heard your opponent was like Hillary, like freaking out, like yelling at people, smashing things. That's what Casey said.
She did not.
Looking at balloons.
Couple locals were hanging themselves.
Right, yeah.
The good thing about Prosper is we all come together after the election, so at least I hope so.
What is the experience been like so far, um, post, like what happens? So how, is there like a transition of power? Like, what do you call that?
Yeah, I saw the ceremony.
Is there like a, is there like some sort of like?
January sixth. He got sworn in. There was a guy down the street causing a big ruckus, and then he's like, let's go charge down there. No?
No.
There's, there's gotta be some like meeting, right? There's like transition, right?
So I think it was, um.
Team? Do you have a transition team?
It was within a week or a week and a half of the election.
Okay.
Did you have to call the National Guard in?
We had our, I did not. We had our swearing in. And so the two that were stepping down off the board, they recognized them, thanking for their service, and they brought Jordan Dial up who won in place one, and then Kelly Cavender, who won reelection in place three, and then myself for place six. And so they swear us in. We have our hand on the Bible. We're, you know, swearing to uphold the constitution. I mean, it's, it's pretty surreal that that's actually what happened.
The constitution?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, if you go back.
I thought it might, I swear to uphold the school board agenda?
I will not chew gum. I will not run in the halls.
No. Um, so we take our seat then, and we immediately go into session and elect our new board officers, and yeah, we're all just kind of trying to figure it out. And, um, and then all the training starts and the bonding with the board, different events that we go to to try to kind of figure out how we're gonna work well as a team and set our goals. So it's, the summer was, was very busy. I thought it was gonna be slow because it was summer, but we were planning for the fall and trying to kind of figure out the dynamics of the board and, um, assigning our committees and, and all that. So now that the school year started, it's a hundred miles an hour.
Did you guys do any team building exercises?
We did the trust fall.
Did you?
Trust falls?
Yeah. Did you do a reps course? No, none of that. Okay. I mean, that stuff's effective. Did you think when you did the trust fall, you knew someone was recording?
I thought they were gonna drop me.
This is where I'm going viral. Day one, you're, you're gonna be on Barstool Sports, something like that, where you just hit the ground.
Yeah.
God, maybe you should have.
We, I think we should have.
There'd be a lot of good publicity.
At the next school board meeting, I will, I will present that idea.
So who caught you? Hey, just let me fall. Just let me fall right there in the dirt. Transition takes place, and then you do your trust fall, and then what happens, uh, like on your first day, like, like what's your orientation to this whole process like? Cause you've never done this before, right? So now you're, you're like, what the hell am I doing when I go to, you know, this, this gig?
For the other people that won, was it their first time too?
One other person, yeah. So two of us got elected for the first time, and, um, then Kelly was reelected to a second term. No, it's, I still don't know exactly what, what it all means to be a trustee. I mean, we're, we're learning as we go. Right now, we're working on setting the budget. So this is the first budget I've been a part of. I'm on the finance subcommittee.
Budget more for transportation.
We've had some transportation issues, that's for sure. Uh, but yeah, it's, um, I think just trying to figure out the dynamics of the board is the big thing throughout the summer. Where every year there's a new board unless there's no, no changes in who gets elected. So we had two new people come on, um, were the youngest board members. Two people that had served the longest came off, so it's just a much different dynamic. So it's, I think, figuring out, um, the common goals for the district and how we're all gonna work together with admin and each other, and, and there's differences of opinion. I mean, not everybody agrees on everything, and so it's trying to.
It's good. So for, for our listeners and for myself also included, reminding me, so you're on the school board.
Correct.
And for anyone that didn't hear the previous episode, what influence do you have on the school board and what changes could you make? And anyone listening right now should be like, all right, this is why it's so important to vote for the school board or be engaged and ask questions.
I'm glad you asked that.
I kind of forget.
The, the biggest thing is that we need parents in the community to stay involved, to ask questions, and to show up to their board meetings and to their town council meetings. I think that this last year and probably going into, you know, the coming, coming elections, we're gonna have more parents that decide to step up and get involved than we've ever had. And it's because going through COVID and, and all these different things that have happened, we're paying attention now. We don't inherently trust, whether it's your government, whether it's the school district, you don't inherently just trust it. We're gonna ask questions. So what a school board does is we set the vision for the district. Uh, we have our goals, which we will then hold administration accountable on. We hire the superintendent, and, um, we set the tax rate. So we don't manage the schools. So the transportation issue, for example, we don't go hire bus drivers. We don't go interview employees. We don't walk in and tell the district how to run the schools.
Did you prove bus driver rate increases?
We did do that. That was, actually, that was Dr. Ferguson's idea, and I think it was a great idea. She had presented to the board that, you know, I think this is something we should do, and, um, I think it was a great decision.
Yeah, I saw the email that came out. The email was actually pretty good because they, the district owned it and said, hey, listen, we expected three thousand, we got forty five hundred. This is, it is what it is, but we're trying to fix it.
Did any, did you think about quitting your job?
Did I?
To, they're hiring.
To drive buses? No, I don't like kids that much.
No yelling on the bus.
That Veronica, come on. You would be a tough bus driver.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I would.
Shut up!
Yeah, I would.
Sit down!
It would be a lot of.
I'm calling Santa.
First day, it'd be like, listen, you can't come back. This is your only hour of work.
You have to pay him more. That's, it's supply and demand, right? Did you eat my pizza?
That's an inside joke.
I have a question. Yeah, like, I heard there were five doctors. Are there five thousand kids in the high school?
Or like. Prosper High has thirty six hundred.
Kids.
Some change, yeah.
In just the high school.
And then Rock Hill has twenty, twenty four hundred.
Okay. And I saw a photo of like kids in between classes. They were shoulder to shoulder.
Yeah.
That's how my high school was.
And they could, no, I mean, like they could, like if there was a fire, dude, like it would have been, like kids would have gotten trampled. Like, it was bad.
The interesting thing about that is because my wife and I talked about this a little bit, because in my high school, when I was in school, they had two separate, they basically ran two separate schools during the day. So half the school had first period, and it was like an hour and a half long, and then the other half of the school had first period, and it was like forty five minutes long. So that shifted the days for both of those to where nobody was in the hallways all at one time.
Yeah.
But then you think about that, you're like, if there is a fire, everybody's gonna get out at all the same time.
Yeah, it's chaos.
I don't really know how that, that really works.
I mean, you do fire drills up the wazoo, but dude, like if it's like in the, or if some kid, God forbid, decides to come in there with a firearm, and it's in the middle of, in between classes, and you've got five, you know, however many thirty, five hundred kids all trying to get from one side of the school to the next, and you got.
Well, where are the fire exits? You know, I mean, they're not all at the front. Like, a lot of different, there's a lot of different fire exits.
It's overcrowded.
People can utilize rather than just the main hallway, right?
Yeah. Couple of things about what you guys just mentioned. So the, the schools are definitely overcrowded. I mean, the, the biggest challenge we're having is being able to build schools fast enough. We don't have the roads. So like Walnut, which is gonna open in fall of twenty four, we still don't have all the roads done over in that area. And so it's a coordination between town and the district and getting all that done. We need our fourth high school out here already, which is gonna be somewhere in the Windsong Suttonfields area. Um, and we haven't even broke ground, and we already need that school. So trying to figure out where to put the schools, where the growth is coming from, and then how quickly we can build them, um, I think is the biggest problem. And then, of course, staffing, you know, the, the transportation, we need bus drivers.
You get all that information of like where they're gonna build it or determine where they're gonna build it?
Yeah, we approve all of that, so.
All right, so if it comes down to like maybe one or two locations, it'd be nice if some people knew. I mean. Maybe buy some land around hypothetical school?
You don't think you wanna be next to a school necessarily? I don't know what.
No, a lot of that, we, they don't.
Is that a bad thing? I don't know if how, if it's how advantageous it is necessarily to be right next to the school.
I mean, there's still signs back at the back of Windsong back here that says future location.
I'm just saying, if you wanna win again.
That's what I thought. Garrett, I thought they'd already chose the Windsong Middle School and High School.
Yeah, I thought so too.
But no, that's not the case, huh?
There's a lot of land they already have purchased. There's still other.
Fuck. Do it.
Yeah. You didn't even let him finish.
Oh, sorry, continue.
Yeah, so they already, the next several schools, they already have land purchased and, and where they're gonna put the schools, but some of that's not public yet. Some of it, the board doesn't even know yet. So we'll have to wait and see.
So, so why don't they just like build a school wherever they can access the school from? And then just his own kids to that school to like take some of the pressure off the, you know, artery.
Stop the bleeding!
It's like.
The problem is.
It's only a flesh wound.
We gotta like.
The west side of town is blowing up.
Yeah.
The south side of town is blowing up over by Frisco, down in kind of the Spradley area. Um, so the growth is just, it's everywhere.
Right.
So we can't open.
Basically Prosper's blowing up. I mean, when I moved here, it was, uh, I think when you came into Prosper, it has a population sign. It's like twenty three thou, twenty three and a half thousand or something like that. I think now it says thirty five. I mean, that's, and that was two and a half years ago.
I don't think those signs are very accurate.
I mean, but still.
And going for, going from, uh, the beginning of last year, beginning of last year, we had twenty two thousand five hundred-ish students. We now have twenty four thousand five hundred.
And that Rock Hill, the Rock Hill High School, it isn't even in Prosper, right?
Yeah, that's in Frisco.
It's in Frisco. It's a.
The ISD goes between Salina, McKinney, Frisco, Prosper, and then part of Aubrey.
Yeah, so if you live like close to the line, you would go to potentially to another town's school district.
Well, I mean, it's still Prosper School District though.
Yeah.
Right, but, but it's in Frisco.
The east part of McKinney, the south part of Salina, the north part of Frisco, they're zoned for Prosper ISD.
Yeah, so there's kids that, there's kids from Frisco that also go to that school.
No.
No.
What?
It's just in Frisco.
Right. All right. Let's move on.
I can't figure that out.
It's all colloquialistic.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that don't care.
I wanna hear about the drama.
Yeah, I do.
Some juicy things had to go down. We got a lot of listeners. They're, they're, they're gonna go back and listen to the one that you ran on. They're gonna hear Casey, how awesome she was. Knocked on a shit ton of doors.
Her flag waving was way too aggressive.
Yeah.
It offended me.
Aggressive flag waving.
Any good stories? You know, Jeff mentioned they're making a twenty.
Twenty mules?
Twenty mules instead of two thousand.
I know, right?
Nineteen. Anything good? Anything worth telling you?
Some recounts, maybe? Maybe recount on the election results?
Yeah, was there?
Was there?
I heard there was.
There almost was.
There almost was?
There was not a recount.
It was that, cause it was that close.
It was really close. I mean, and I don't, you know, I don't blame people for wanting to make sure the results are good, but.
I would ask for a fucking recount. Nineteen votes? I'm like, recount on it right now. You're competitive, you know? I mean, that's why you're getting a race, you know, because you wanna win. So, and you know.
It was, it was the closest school board election with the highest turnout in a non-November election race.
Dudes talking freedom.
How many, how many votes total?
Two thousand, I got two thousand three hundred ninety seven.
Damn!
He got two thousand three hundred nineteen less than that. I've had some whiskey with you guys.
Nice. Oh, yeah. Um, the whiskey that we have, shout out to Short Barrel Whiskey.
This is week number two that we have.
Week number two. This is the El Jefe.
Is this the official whiskey of dudes talking freedom?
Um, I don't know. We, we'll all have to vote on it. Jeremy hasn't had it yet. Taking a little hiatus.
A hundred and eleven proof?
From the whiskey. So, um, yeah, a hundred and eleven proof, and our last guest, Forest Man, um, big shout to you. He got, um, a couple of bottles thrown at him.
He did. I saw he posted it on, on his IG that he was unwrapping some bottles, huh?
Yeah, so thank you, um, Adam over at Short Barrel Whiskey, and this is the El Jefe. Last week, we had the Rye one oh one, so. It's got your name on it, Jeff.
I know.
It does.
Holy shit. El Jefe.
That's why I was modeling it.
But, uh, Garrett, do you, can you, probably can, this is a stupid question, but. Winning by nineteen votes, and you said when people were walking up to the polls, you're walking up and like shaking hands and stuff. Can you still remember certain faces? You're like.
Hundred percent.
I know that guy's gonna go and vote for me right now.
Hundred percent. I mean, I, I had knocked on enough doors. I had met with enough people through my meet and greets and all that, that there was a lot of people I recognized. I had people coming up saying, dude, I would never have voted in a school board election, but you knocked on my door. You made a case. I'm here to vote.
The next day.
And the nice thing is it kept happening in front of other, other candidates. So I'm like, see, it works.
Yeah. Hey, ask for the sale, right? Like you gotta ask for the sale. That's what's the most scariest question for most people. They're just asking. Yeah. Uh, most people would promote, 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 tell you all about it, but they, it's hard for them to go for the close. Hey, can I get your money or sign here? Can I get your vote? Dude, the next day, did you just kind of walk out and your wife was like, oh shit, kind of like the swag about yourself? Little bit?
So kind of funny story, and this is a total joke for anybody listening, but you know, we'll be, I'll be at home and my wife will, I'll ask her something, and she'll either ignore me or say no, or you know, our wife say no. I'm like, babe, but I'm an elected official now. You can call me the honorable if you want.
Like, yes, yes, superintendent.
There was, there was some, um, other elected officials that would send congratulations, and, and she got the mail the day that it said, the honorable Garrett Linker.
Oh, no.
And I.
Best thing I've ever seen. Is it framed?
She.
In the house?
Macy's. Let's take that guy to the Macy's Thanksgiving parade. Honorable the dishwasher right now. Go unload it, sir.
No, she, she hated that. She won't, she won't refer to me that way.
My wife, no. She would have ripped it right up.
It's an honor, you know? I mean, you, you're not even getting paid, you know? You're out there busting your ass. You're putting in your time, you know? I mean, it's a, it's a commitment.
Well, and we had Amy, um, how do you pronounce her last name, Luke?
Borden.
Borden.
Yeah, and that's your connection up in Connecticut, Jeremy. Um, you wanna kind of tell a little bit about her and then how it's segwayed into what he is now running into, because we had her on out long before.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get her back on. She's got her, uh, own show. She's starting with a friend of hers up there, uh, in Connecticut as well.
Carson Tucker.
She, we had her on. We talked about, um, you know, critical waste area and, and a lot of the, the content that's being kind of pushed into the schools. She's dealing with a lot of it up in Connecticut and.
The day after Valentine's Day. So when it aired, just why.
Wow, look at you.
What did?
Her podcast aired the day after Valentine's Day.
Oh, it did?
So for anyone listening and like hearing you talk about Amy and the episode.
All right, well, so.
Find her.
Yeah, the February fifteenth episode. So then we had Garrett on, and some of the content that we were talking about with Amy was around, like, they were using pizza as, uh, you know, pizza toppings. Vince tells this way better.
Pizza and consent.
He gets it more than I do.
Because I didn't believe it. I was the one that would always say, there is no way this shit is happening. There's not these books. I'm such a skeptic when it comes out. No teacher in their right mind, but a teacher was saying, and you may have seen this before, that they accidentally gave out this homework assignment.
Yeah.
Where they sent it all out to kids brought it home, and they're like, well, if you want oral sex, you'd like pepperoni. So it's good for these thirteen, fourteen year olds, eighth graders, seventh and eighth graders, so even younger than, not even at age of consent. But if you, it got so graphic to where Amy was saying that even if you want anchovies, that means you're into anal sex. So she goes to their school board meeting with all these pizzas, and she's reading off this homework assignment, and you could see the people on the board getting uncomfortable. She's like, yes, it's uncomfortable, isn't it? Well, here's all the pizzas. What type, what toppings do you want? School board official X, Y, Z.
You look like you like some anchovies. Here you go.
Definitely. You're getting some anchovies tonight.
And here's a baby wipe. So this stuff is like.
You know, did you eat my pizza?
She said, and I remember she said to us on that show, she's like, it's, it's on its way to Texas. It's probably already, if it's not already there. And we were all like, yeah, it's definitely already here. I mean, we, you know, it's gonna, it's good. And so what, have you seen any of that type of like school curriculum and content being?
It's already here. To me, I moved to Texas because I didn't think it would ever be here.
Hundred percent.
All of us.
That's what's mind boggling to me. I don't think, cause when.
But it is.
We said to Amy, I still remember Amy's like, oh, it's coming for you guys. And I was like, the fuck it is.
But yeah, but here's the thing, like we, yeah, but like, just like COVID, COVID went everywhere. It, we got rid of it very quickly here in Texas, but, which I think, you know, if we pay enough people pay attention, we can get rid of the whole CRT thing and all of that content in the school systems in Texas too.
You have, sorry to interrupt you. The, the problem is people do not believe that it's happening. And so.
That's me.
For example, so we talk about the sexualizing of children. I think Prosper ISD, we're not having that issue. We had some book problems, but they've removed the books and, and we're good.
Because you're there.
Well, no, that happened before me.
Influenced it. They knew it.
This, Garrett's coming, get this shit out of here. Out of Frisco ISD, which is, for people that don't know where that is, it's literally five minutes to our south.
And just for our listeners that don't know this, it was ranked number one town to, um, have a family in like three years ago in the whole country.
Yeah, and Frisco.
Things are moving fast up here in North Texas though.
But here's the problem. So Emerson High School, which is one of the high schools in Frisco, there was a post from Emerson HS Counselors. So it's the counseling department in Emerson High School.
Councils.
The, the picture is, it says self-love reminders. You guys can all see it. And one of the things says toys can help you overcome sexual anxiety. So this blew up a couple of days ago.
Repeat that again?
Toys can help you overcome.
Sexual anxiety. So this is what high school counselors are posting online for their students.
So here's, here's what happened.
Probably their argument though.
So they, Frisco ISD has announced, uh, or they released a statement that obviously they are not in, this was not something they wanted to have posted. It was not something they approve of.
Wasn't sanctioned.
Pizza and consent all over again.
They said they got hacked, and so there's an investigation on, there's an investigation.
Was it Russian hackers?
Yes. Jared Patterson, who is the state rep in our area, so he covers the Denton part of Prosper and then goes down into Frisco and all around here. He had, he, he's been on the forefront of kind of getting the sexualization of kids out of schools. So he, he posted this on his page and kind of took them to task. And rightfully so. I mean, if you have counselors in your school posting that. Even if I'm sure the ISD would not approve of that. I'm sure admin would not approve of that, but you cannot have your counselors posting something like that. That would. That would never happen in Prosper. Um, but it happened in Frisco. And so you've got Jared Patterson releasing a statement on it. Uh, Stephanie Elad, who is on the school board. She just got elected in May. She's amazing. Um, she's speaking out and it's just. People need to realize that it's in Texas. It's not, it's not prevalent, especially not in this area, but it is happening and we have to be on the forefront. Parents have to pay attention.
So I moved here in two thousand and I moved down to Dallas.
From where?
From Oklahoma, right? From, from Stillwater, Oklahoma. I lived eighteen years in Dallas. Dallas is a whole lot different than Prosper. Dallas is a lot like.
Blue, New York.
Some of your towns out in California, right? Some of your cities out in California. And it's like Austin. Austin is the new, you know, Silicon Valley, the new. San Francisco, basically, right? So like the, the major city centers here in Texas are very blue. I mean, it's not, I mean, it's a misnomer to think that, you know, Texas.
But not Frisco.
So conservative.
Frisco is not Dallas.
Well, Frisco used to be more like Prosper, but then, uh, a whole lot of corporate headquarters got, uh, planted into Frisco because of very. You know, favorable business climate, uh, that the, the city leaders, you know, ve- very intellectually put together. I mean, it brought tons of economic stimulus to Frisco. It was great for the town.
Frisco, I mean, I don't, I'm just making up numbers, but to talk about how drastic it is, Frisco fifteen years ago was probably fifteen, twenty thousand people, maybe.
Yeah, it was a bunch of fields, you know, it was just a bunch of farmland and ranches. I mean.
Thousand people and they're all done, said and done, isn't it?
Frisco's couple hundred thousand.
They got fourteen high schools. Think about that.
Fourteen, really?
Yeah, fourteen. I thought it was six.
They have, they have sixty, like sixty-six thousand students.
Well, just. They threw this other one up over on the other side of three eighty in like two days.
Yeah. Oh, I want to come, I want to come back.
I drove by and I come back and all of a sudden it's done. I'm like, that's a really nice looking high school.
And then I realized it's the new high school.
Just to make it understandable for a lot of people, just to, in the world, really, Dallas, the show, very popular show. Uh, the Brinkman Ranch is right there in Frisco and it's still there, still.
It's still like two thousand acres, right? That big open spot right there in the middle of Frisco?
Yeah, tons of livestock still roaming the fields out there, you know.
Guys are worth so much money.
But you see the, you see the footage of Dallas, the show, Dallas, and you know, that's, that's what Frisco was. That's where they filmed it, you know? So it was country.
Twelve high schools, not fourteen, sorry. Still, that's a ton. Sixty-five thousand. I mean, fact checking myself.
Four thousand people. Three thousand kids for like school, thirty-six thousand kids in my school.
Frisco has the same population issue that we do, or do they have enough schools that it's not?
They have enough schools by now and they're ahead of it, I feel like.
Their infrastructure is a lot better than ours. That's.
They've got a lot more roads for sure. Yeah, we've got a lot of gravel roads.
So is that part of your role being on there also? You guys are looking, cause how long it takes for planning, preparation, construction, money, budgeting? You guys are looking five to seven years down the road. What do you think Prosper, Prosper might turn into?
Um, well, first, first touch on what you just said. The problem is we have so many different municipalities. That we have to work with. So we've got to work with McKinney, Frisco, Salina and Prosper to help with the roads. Um, not all, not all municipalities are as cooperative and not everything is.
Fucking McKinney dude, you don't gotta say, I know. I hate those people. That's where I used to live.
The, uh, so we've got to get, we've got to get the town, all the different towns on board to get our roads done as quick as we can. The, the ISD really doesn't have that much control over that. We can pre-fund a road and get reimbursed by the town. We've done that. I can't remember where the last one is that we did, but we've done that recently. Um, but as far as the, the, where the growth is, we hire a demographer. That is independent. They look at the growth patterns. They look at the neighborhoods. They look at how many lots have been sold. And they basically make a projection that says, okay, well, you know, based upon what we're looking at, this is where you're going to have the most growth. This is where you need to put a new school, but it's not exact. I mean, things can change. So what admin's trying to do, Dr. Bradley is our, our person. Who mainly manages that. Um, he's trying to look at all those numbers and where the growth patterns are to try to strategically place those schools. But then they take time to build.
They not build like multiple schools at once?
Yeah. So next year, we're opening up two elementary schools plus our early education. And we also have our middle school being built, our fifth middle school. We also have our third high school being built. So they're building a lot at one time.
Build multiple high schools at once.
So is that also how they kind of, kind of configure taxes also? Because they gotta look at teacher salaries that they're gonna be paying.
So there's two, there's two different parts of the tax, uh, the tax rate. There's the, uh, maintenance and operations and then the, um, interest in sinking. So maintenance and operations is what funds, school salaries, all of that. Um, interest in sinking is what pays down the debt. From the bond elections. So we can set the tax rate and it, we're gonna set that actually at the, the meeting next week on Monday. Um, and hopefully we can reduce that.
Yeah, what's going on?
That's, I'm not making a statement. I'm saying hopefully.
Well, don't we have a big surplus?
No.
No?
The ISD does not. I mean, they.
Fake news, Luke.
They barely.
How long you been waiting to pull that one out?
Over there.
Whiskey's kicking in.
Yeah, with revenue and expenses, there is not much of a surplus at all. And especially with how much we're trying to build, we, I mean, they can't be giving big tax cuts. So. But hopefully we can shave, you know, a hair off.
As long as it doesn't go up, I'm happy.
Hopefully not.
I'd be happy with that.
You don't like it going down?
It's the value of our homes that are really driving our tax bill, right? You know, I mean, like, that's the macro.
Well, yeah, but if they're gonna skyrocket along with increasing taxes and, you know.
But a common misconception, and I admit.
The market's gonna crash though.
I had this misconception when I was running.
We are not, we are not financial advisors.
I thought the more expensive our houses are, the more property taxes we pay, the more money the school district gets.
Yeah.
But the way Texas works is essentially it's just a smaller portion that the state will kick in to fund the difference. Um, they're, all the districts are paid pretty similar on students, uh, enrolled. Are you looking at me?
I'm not. I'm sorry.
So just because assessed values have gone up does not mean the school district is getting all this extra money. It means the state's gonna kick in less than what they would have. So it's, it's a.
All right, now this is my turn to say, talk to me like I'm six, because I am not following. Are you saying that our, what we pay in taxes that are supposed to be for like the, the school district? Cause doesn't it say school district?
It is. About one point four six was your taxes for the school district, but our total tax rate's two point five something.
He's saying we pay a certain amount of taxes and then the state gives Prosper ISD.
Basically, the state looks at what, the state looks at what we collected and they said, okay, based on what you collected, we're gonna just kick in a smaller amount because you collected more. Whereas if we collect less, then they'll kick in a little bit more. So for us.
So at the end, we still get the same amount. Just the state's cheating.
State screws us either way.
Very socialist of them.
It is a little bit, right? Like it's to help flatten out the spending.
It's to help. It's to help the, the schools that don't have the means that somewhere like Prosper or Frisco has. Um, but schools that have a lot of revenue, we're not able to use it all because either we have to give back to the state if we. If the enrollment numbers weren't what we thought they were gonna be, um, or taxes for the school district, but our total tax rate's two point five something.
He's saying we pay a certain amount of taxes and then the state gives Prosper ISD.
Basically, the state looks at what, the state looks at what we collected and they said, okay, based on what you collected, we're gonna just kick in a smaller amount because you collected more. Whereas if we collect less, then they'll kick in a little bit more. So for us.
So at the end, we still get the same amount. Just the state's cheating.
State screws us either way.
Very socialist of them.
It is a little bit, right? Like it's to help flatten out the spending.
It's to help.
To poor.
It's to help the, the schools that don't have the means that somewhere like Prosper or Frisco has. Um, but schools that have a lot of revenue, we're not able to use it all because either we have to give back to the state if we. If the enrollment numbers weren't what we thought they were gonna be, um, or they.
We don't have that problem.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, we're oversubscribed right now.
Yes.
Uh, but people are up in arms about that too. And I'm kind of like, I'm like, man, I don't want my kid going to a high school that's got. Four thousand fucking kids in it. Like by the time he gets there.
Why?
Cause that's a lot. Like it's, it's not designed for that many kids. It's like.
My high.
Right now, he's got twenty-five and look at the way you turned out, bro.
Fucking awesome. It was weird when I graduated. There was like people that I've never even seen before in four years.
Crazy.
I was like, you graduated with me? I'm like, you are a smoke show. And I wish I would have met you before my crazy ex.
There's just three hundred some odd people I graduated with, so.
Mine was like one sixty-six.
Really?
Class size?
Yeah. Foxborough, Massachusetts. It was like, yeah, it was like between ones. I think it was like ones, it wasn't, wasn't above one seventy, I don't think.
Embarrassing. There's more Dunkin' Donuts in that square mile than.
There's more Dunkin' Donuts than there are kids that graduated with me.
Seriously, that's a, that's a fact.
I went to, I went to, uh, I went to, uh, Bentley College up in Massachusetts and I, I do that. I like. Lived on my dorm floor in freshman year. He's from Vermont and he went to some high school in like rural Vermont, like near the fricking. Canadian border and he had like twelve kids in his graduating class. It was like.
I graduated in the top ten percent.
Yep.
Something like that.
He's like, I was valedictorian.
Yeah. So what are your, what are your goals right now? What do you see happening for the, and wait, how long's your term?
Three years.
Three years. So the clock started.
Time to make some changes, alright?
May seventh.
So a couple of months in.
Three months, yeah, May, June, yeah, three months in, a little over three months. So.
What, what are you working on?
What am I working on?
Like, like.
What are your aspirations?
You, the, uh, the school board, you know.
So my personal goals, I.
President?
Of the world.
Throw your voice. Did you say that?
I did not say that.
Did you just say, did I say that?
Did you say that? You want to be president?
I can easily find out when I.
No, that's a tough job.
That's like the worst job. Uh, yeah. Um, no, our, our admin's doing as good of a job, I think, as possible right now with the growth. But for my, my personal goals, um, I want to see, I would love to see less technology. Um, it's kind of a hot button issue going through COVID, all of our kids down from kindergarten up through high school. Basically complete overhaul with technology.
Less technology in the classroom.
Less technology.
Okay, good. I like.
Now, no, I'm not saying I want.
My knee jerk reaction, I was like, why?
I'm not saying.
Cause that's kind of the future.
There's a good balance.
Explain, coach me up.
I don't like to see kindergarteners and first and second graders on tablets.
Swipe in right and left.
I don't like the fact that we have no textbooks in high school.
Yeah.
It's all online. Um, there's something about having a book in your hand, the handwriting, you know, spelling, all the things that we grew up with. Those are the foundations. I think.
Cursive.
Now.
Book covers, making book covers out of paper bags. Did you guys do that? Did you guys all do that?
Hell, yeah.
Explain that to my kids the other day and they're like, cause they had, they have their Chromebooks and, uh, you know, in, in middle school. And I'm like. This, I'm like, you guys like, they walk home and their bag is like half empty. I'm like, what is going on? Where are all your books? And they're like, well, I have any books.
I don't like. Yeah, she doesn't even have like a actual backpack anymore. She just has like this little thing.
But there's, it's just like television and computers, they dumb you down. It's like.
There's no chalkboards anymore.
It lowers their level of.
There was something about going to ShopRite Northeast, you know, and getting the paper bags and cutting them up and measuring it out.
If we didn't have our books covered.
And you write on it and then people write on the.
Geometry, you know, teaches you a bunch of that.
And then they had like the new stretchy ones.
What I learned from dealing drugs.
The rich kids, the rich kids had like, like almost like spandex type. The stretchy ones, you know, the book covers, you guys were like, the rich kids had them, not me. I was, I hated them so much.
Chopper keepers?
So no, it'll be like a book cover. They'll go over, but it's just like this weird like, like pillow cover, but it's like.
Oh, it stretches.
And it goes and wraps right around it. So it takes someone two seconds.
My pillow guy that.
No, man. I was using paper bags forever, my whole.
Yes, was awesome.
High school all the way through, yeah.
In Oklahoma, because there's a bunch of Indians in Oklahoma, you know, five civilized tribes got sent there.
Where in Oklahoma?
In all of Oklahoma. Actually, it's twin territories, right? I already talked about this.
Oklahoma Sooners, your favorite team.
Shut the front door. So we take, sorry about that. We would take the brown paper bags and we crumple them all up and to look like, uh, Buffalo pelts.
And then put them on your books? Or you'd like wear them?
They're wearing the paper bags.
How we, we put them on our feet, moccasins.
Walking around with like snowshoes outside when it's like snow.
Walking uphill both ways in the snow.
I had to come back. You guys got me nineteen votes.
Can you make that a mandatory thing and you're like, propose that saying paper?
So let me, let me talk a little more.
Okay, yeah, go back to the, I, I, I love these ideas.
The school board.
I think they're horrible.
The only elected official that actually has direct responsibility for academics, right? So anybody that you go and vote for, the only one you can vote for that actually directly impacts academics is your school board. So that has to be number one. And Prosper just got an A from T E A.
Nice.
They look at.
What's T E A?
So Texas Education Agency, they look at our SAT or, uh, star scores. They look at, um, closing the gap between high performing, low performing students. And then school progress year after year. And they assign you a grade. It's a flawed system. It's not great, but it's the system that we have. So that's what everybody looks at. So Prosper just got an A, came out about a week and a half ago.
Nice.
But we had some schools that dropped a bit. We had some schools that did really well. And for me, I'm thinking if, if they're looking closely at our third and fourth graders, which are kind of the, the grades, they look real closely at the star scores. These were the kids that went through COVID in a virtual way, right? So our kindergarteners and, and first graders that. Were at home learning on a tablet, learning on a Chromebook. Um, and I think that's a direct reflection of what we're seeing now. And so the overhaul of everything technology on our young kids is a huge concern for me. Um, so I would like to see Prosper being the best and highest academic performing district in Texas as a whole, but especially in our area. Um, and I think a way that we can do that is to revisit how much we use technology. We have to prepare our kids for the future. Technology is the future, but I think there's a way to do that, especially when they're so young.
When you're young, your brain is more geared towards creativity, right?
A sponge.
Right? Yeah, absolutely. And technology stymies that, that creativity. It really does. I mean, any Ivy League school and, uh, the, all the experts say that, you know, but that's not how we're putting it into, uh, practice.
Well, Steve Jobs didn't let his kids have an iPhone or iPad or read something about that because he knows how dangerous they can be. Yeah.
I love you too. I didn't know we were gonna say that, but.
No, I love the.
Things are getting weird.
Stuff out of schools. I, I was telling, like, I went to, you know, meet the teacher nights at the elementary school, whatever, and they got those smart boards.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm like, wait, they don't even have chalk.
I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, but it's always, you've got this always, you always have this light constantly. It's, you know, and you know how I feel about like light poisoning. And EMF free, you know, frequency poisoning.
Has that been an episode?
Uh, we've like discussed it here and there, but.
Jeremy can have you design a school a whole new way. You need a massive budget.
Hey, kids won't be getting EMF poisoning and, uh, you know, shit.
Everyone get in your classroom, start bouncing on.
Anyway, uh, so less screens for me, less like shitty lighting, all that stuff. Cause it all has an effect on the kids and their mental state and, you know, all that stuff. So I'm, I'm, I'm down with getting rid of that shit.
You mentioned teachers. We have amazing teachers in this district. We have to keep hiring the best teachers though. That's the problem. Um, every school district is struggling. The pool is shrinking. People are leaving. Yeah, and so I.
Do you think the teachers are leaving because of things that were posted that they want to be teaching?
Say that again?
Like, do you think teachers are leaving? Why? Uh, the reason why I said because of what was posted and they're like, oh, I can't post the things I want to teach.
I don't know.
No, like how like the, the thing that he was talking about that said, in order to reduce your anxiety, you know, use sexual toys. That a lot of these teachers are like, you know what? It's not even worth me going to school and teaching anymore because I can't teach the things I want to teach. Which are those weird pizza consent and stuff like that.
Well, I mean, I guess it depends on how many of those people are out there that.
I think most teachers are. I think most teachers.
So you have exit interviews. That you do with the teachers and what kind of feedback are you getting?
So I think they try to do that. They are hiring a, um, basically a, a recruitment. Way to figure out how to retain, you know, and then recruit the best teachers. There's a new position coming, um, to the district that's going to focus on that. But you had said something.
Oh, boy.
What did you say?
Oh, I was gonna answer your question. So.
Why are they leaving?
There's a group of, of people that are under the mindset that teachers are leaving because they don't feel, they're, they feel too much. Criticism from parents, lack of support, things like that. I hear that a lot. I don't know if it's.
Snowflakes.
I hear other people that, that say teachers are leaving, lack of support from, you know, the admin or whatever. Yeah. And then other teachers that it's just the nature of the profession. Now they're putting so much of their own money in, um, time, you know, they never stop working.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think there's somewhere in the middle of those three, I think is the truth.
There's a COVID hangover with teachers too, by the way.
Hold on, you said snowflakes. I just want to make sure people realize that, like, I've heard some stories about the treatment of teachers by some of the parents.
They're horrible, horrible.
It's horrible. And I wouldn't necessarily call some of those teachers snowflakes.
No, I'm not saying all of them.
I don't want to deal with these crazy fucking parents.
Just to clarify, I'm not hating on teachers at all. No, 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 the ones that get upset about criticism, but granted, they, they signed up to teach our kids and this is our future. And then parents would come in and rip their heads off because they gave them a B instead of an A.
Privilege.
There's been a drastic change since we were in school because when we were in school and we fucked up, our parents were yelling at us. And now I feel like there's a lot of, I know, now there's a lot of.
There's this, there's a lot of entitlement.
Yeah. Now, when kids get in school, get in trouble in school, like the parents are yelling at the teachers for the kids getting in trouble.
What, what I'm saying is that things that we had in front of Amy, like those types of teachers that want to do pizza consent. And then there was that one teacher that went viral. When you went in his classroom, he had posters of, you know, um, Cuban presidents and China, like he was totally a massive communist. He was all on Project Veritas, Project Veritas.
Oh, the Antifa flag and like, yeah, it's popping back.
But there's, there's a huge teacher movement because it's not like a teacher's like, oh, pizza consent. And then if all the other teachers were against it, they would have, he would never even gotten that far. What I feel there's a massive underbelly of teachers that do have an agenda of molding the future generation saying. of molding the future generation saying, we need more when you're four years old. If you decide to become a, a different sex, go for it. That's your privilege. You're allowed to do that. And I feel a lot of teachers are promoting, not a lot. There's a certain small sector. So I gotta, I gotta, I gotta pull back a little bit. I don't want anyone thinking I'm a teacher hater at all. I'm just worried about.
Well, that's a, that's a problem everywhere.
That's why we're talking about this, cause it's happening.
Yeah.
And, and Prosper ISD really tries to hire the absolute best. And, and we do pull a ton of teachers from other districts.
Yeah.
Um, because the culture and, and everything else that our, our district represents.
And we pay more?
We do not pay.
Don't, we should.
We're pretty competitive. The, we, we've made some, um, adjustments to our pay scale that are, are in an attempt to try to make us more competitive. And, and I think eventually we'll get there. Um.
What would it take for us to pay the best?
Spend more money.
Million dollars. What kinda tax increase are we talking?
Listen, I said tax decrease, Luke.
Yeah, but like, you know, like if it's gonna cost me an extra thousand or two dollars a year, you know, I'm willing to do that if I can get the best. I'm willing.
He's saying if we pay an extra thousand dollars a year, then the state's just gonna give us less money and we're gonna end up at the. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what the exact, exact answer is on that, but, um.
No, cause it's still, it's still a thousand dollars. It's still more money.
Out of our pockets.
But like, let's say, uh, right now, let's say we give five thousand dollars for school. And this, and the state for, for every person that gives five thousand dollars to the school, uh, district for taxes, the state gives a thousand. I'm just saying.
So it's about seven thousand per student.
Right? Yeah. Okay. So it ends up being seven, with the, with the, uh, money that comes from the state.
So let's say, for example, let's just for an easy, easy example, let's say seven thousand per student is what we get.
Yeah.
Right.
If we're raising five thousand in property taxes, the state's giving us two.
Okay, cool. Alright, so.
We're raising eight, we're having to give the state a thousand. So it doesn't, we, the more we raise.
Wait, wait, you're giving, you're giving the money to the state?
So through recapture, so look this up. I'll, I don't know the bill to sign off the top of my head.
I will.
But look up recapture.
I'll raise it up right now.
Has to do with states that raise property taxes, expecting to be able to use it on their enrollment numbers. After everything is said and done, the state essentially sends a district a bill and we have to pay the state back. It's.
Yeah, that just doesn't make a lot of sense.
A lot of people think, oh, property taxes are going up, you're gonna have more money, pay teachers more. And it doesn't work that way.
So where are the loopholes, Garrett? Where are the loopholes? Can we buy these teachers' houses?
Have me back on in three months, uh, after a little more time. And you'll have some loopholes for us.
I mean, that's essentially what we have to do is we gotta be like the Green Bay Packers and just throw out, throw in all the amenities that we can possibly do.
Like a plane? Yeah, a jet, a PJ.
Yeah, whatever we can throw at them, right? Like, I don't know.
So crafted.
Yeah.
Patriots. But hey, I wanna go back really quick. You mentioned a lot of teachers are leaving other districts, okay? Is, do you feel it's maybe a couple of different reasons of maybe just moving more money? But, or that they wanna leave that district of school because they're being forced to teach certain things or they don't like this, the values. The reason why I bring that up because like, are they still doing a pledge allegiance in the school? Are they saying prayers in the schools?
Texas and US, right?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm just thinking, I feel that some teachers move out of interstate, like Dallas. And they're like, I just can't teach her anymore because I don't believe in this, not my core values.
I don't think that's the majority. I think there are some activist type, type people we're gonna encounter. I think a lot of the younger teachers that kind of get more of that in their college years now, you know, indoctrination or whatever you wanna call it.
Raw burning.
But I think the vast majority of teachers that, that want to teach are teachers that love kids and wanna make an impact on them. And we are really lucky in Prosper. We very rarely have issues with our teachers like that. Um, and so I don't wanna let this podcast end without recognizing our teachers in Prosper. We have amazing teachers.
Oh, yeah. We've always been very.
Absolute best, yeah.
I'll be the judge of that.
And, and our admin really, and our board goes out of our way, you always say that. Goes out of our way to try to support them and, and show how much we appreciate, but it's a, it's a challenge for sure.
Um, what else? Like any other gotchas, things that surprised you when you like stepped into the role? Like things you, like you, we just talked about with the taxes where you were like, I didn't realize it went, worked that way. I just.
Didn't realize we had to give our taxes back to the state.
Now I'm like even more pissed off about how that whole process works. Cause it's like now I'm like, what's the point of giving more money?
Or is there anyone that you hired that you completely regret? No, I'm just kidding. Is it, was there anyone that you hired three months ago or approved and now you completely regret it? I'm sure, I'm joking with you. I'm joking.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Uh, no, I think.
It was a joke. It was a joke.
Yeah, I mean, if you had to do it all over again, you know, did you do anything differently?
Well, yeah. What would you have done different, like the, better, like lessons learned, things like that?
In three months.
For the next guy.
It's gonna replace you.
No, for the guy that's gonna go at next.
So I, I, I think it's more so just advice to anybody who's wanting to do this. If you're gonna do it and throw your hat in the ring, you have to give it everything. I mean, you have to not leave any stone unturned. You gotta walk, you gotta be online, you gotta do your videos, you gotta communicate with the public. Um, but it takes a ton of time.
You mentioned the videos and that's, explain to our listeners what you're, I thought that was really cool, what you're doing and are you still doing that?
Uh, I'm not. I actually wanna bring it back. I just, I haven't yet. So throughout the campaign, we recorded a video once a week. We took questions from the public on our Facebook. We would put, put out a post saying, hey, send us your questions. And it might be, oh, what do you think about the book issue? What do you think about taxes? What, you know, what about curriculum? I mean, it was a number of issues. And so we would kinda try to see what most people were wanting to talk about. And we would record a video anywhere between five and seven minutes and it would be interview style. So my campaign manager would ask me questions and we would just kinda bounce back and forth. Um, and they were fun. I mean, it was a great way to get our message out.
It's fun.
I boosted the crap out of the video, so I probably annoyed half of this town, but I would boost all the videos, so it would, it'd be like an ad.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Like at a casino on a riverboat. He's like pumping the money in.
Especially cause I didn't know anybody. I, I moved here knowing hardly anyone. I definitely didn't have the support of the district and kinda old Prosper. And so I had to do everything in my ability to overcome that.
Just throwing us out there, you know, maybe once a month or every other week. It would be kinda cool if you did like a live where someone's reading them off because then over time, when people hear about this, it'll probably start really small. And then after six months a year, think about one, popularity, but two, you'll have your critics and you have people that are gonna start talking about you saying, hey, if you want this answered, you know, until it gets too large.
Yeah.
But for the most part, you could do a live where someone like us can come on and be like, that was interesting. Let me ask about this.
Yeah.
And maybe it's one minute and you have one question.
I think that's a good idea. I, I want.
Talk about stuff.